Hi, good evening.
Hey there. Hey Jennifer.
Hey Katie, how are you?
Good, you can hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hey Dan.
Hey Dan.
Ready for fun and games?
Always. So I'm going to set it to live stream in a moment.
Are we gonna have a quorum tonight?
Hope so.
Been no shortage of correspondence on this one, have you?
Lots of reading.
Yeah, yeah, yesterday, I mean, they were kind of trickling in, but yesterday around two o'clock, I, I think there was a bit of a blitz. My computer was like ding, ding, ding.
We have a quorum.
Yes.
Yay.
I was a little worried about that.
How are you Barry?
Had better weeks.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you know, it comes and goes, day by day.
Sorry to hear that.
Although really, I had a physical yesterday. I got on the scale, I couldn't believe my weight, I haven't weighed what I weigh now since high school. I accused the doctor of cheating, but he didn't.
Well, I'm going in the opposite direction. On the scale, it's horrifying.
Well, my, my thing was, I got on the scale about four years ago. Instead, I'm too intelligent to weigh this much. Needed to take off weight. So it's about a, I don't know, probably about a forty percent weight loss.
Hey, Mr. Chair, it's Kevin, I just run a little late because of my daughter's softball game, but I'll be listening to it. I'll turn my video on.
What's the score?
It's nineteen fifteen.
Oh, picture's doing. Almost ready, do we have any listeners?
Twenty-three.
I see twenty-three participants.
Yep, fifteen attendees so far and, and eight panelists. So I will, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'll start the live stream.
Sure, we might as well, we're a couple of seconds away, let's go.
I, I think Mr. Bolton, Commissioner Bolton, he won't be able to make this, so.
Oh, okay. And so we have one, two, three, four, five, six. And was Kevin was seven, so I have seven o'clock. So call this meeting to order, special meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We essentially have a one item agenda, which would be the discussion of the agritourism amendment to the TPZ. I like a motion to reopen that. We did open, yes, let's reopen the public hearing. I'm sorry. Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? I assume none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions, chair votes aye. Madam Planner, where were we? We didn't, we didn't even discuss it last week, did we? Or last month?
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with the live stream.
Uh-oh. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, but it's the live streaming that's giving me an issue.
What will that affect the recording?
It's being recorded on the cloud, but it will affect people to be able to live stream in and watch by YouTube. So I'm just going to try a couple other things and see if I can get it to work, and then otherwise, I think we proceed.
Mr. Romano is here. Well, he's traveling somewhere. How we doing?
Not working yet.
The problem at our end or their end?
Um, it's difficult to tell. Usually when I plunk the, the link that IT gave me into the URL space, it, it works. And now it's just not.
Maybe it's missing a digit or two. Sometimes the last digit might, just double check the last digit, because this has happened to me before.
Oh, has it?
Yeah, double check the last digit, sometime it may drop off by mistakenly hitting delete rather than return. We'll try something like that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's not even giving me an error, I'm just clicking go live, and then it just, the button goes dead and comes back alive again, and that's it. So I've sent a message to IT. Let me see.
Should be fine without.
Okay, I've, I've given it a good shot, so. If we have a pause, I can, I can try again, but for now.
As, as I recall, we did have testimony and a presentation from Mr. Romano. And I think we then shut down at that point.
Yeah, the, the hearing was opened and continued to tonight. So, you know, tonight you can allow the applicant to present, you can continue to hear testimony. We did have over one hundred pages of testimony that were emailed in, a couple of phone calls, just to share some comments, some support, some concerns. So certainly, the commission needs their time to review and go through all of the testimony. I have tried to send over what I could, and then with the volume ended up, just kind of making a call at four fifteen today to go ahead and consolidate all of those, put them up on the website, and send the remainder to all of you in one PDF. So I'm sure you've not had a chance to look through all of those.
No, I saw all the different postings, but I didn't.
Yeah, it's a lot. So you can certainly allow the applicant to present. We can take, you know, comments from the public when you open up the public comment period.
All right, and Mr. Romano will put you back on as the presenter, you're muted at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question before you start.
Go ahead.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I heard none of Mr. Romano's testimony last month, or anything else that took place. How do you want me to proceed?
Well, I think at this point, let's see what Mr. Romano has to say. Any further information he may want to give us, bring us up to date, and, well, let's see how thorough that is, and then we'll, we'll proceed at that point, make a decision at that point.
Okay.
Hang on, listen, Mr. Romano, okay, you're unmuted, go for it.
Oh, so good evening, so may I proceed?
Certainly, go ahead.
So after last month's meeting, and then some discussions with members of the public, there are a couple of points that I just want to make, I think these were concerns that were raised last month. And the first one being a, an acreage, minimum acreage requirement for, for the agritourism regs. I think, I think that's probably an appropriate measure to implement, and so that it will limit people trying to take advantage of the agritourism regs as they're currently stated, and may claim that, you know, backyard farmers are, are, should be able to hold agricultural events, non-agricultural events, et cetera. So I do think that that would be an appropriate amendment to that. I think something in the range of six, seven acres would probably be appropriate, and then limit the scope of the, of the regs. So I do think.
We just lost Mr. Romano. Picture's frozen. I don't see anymore, I don't know if his top is down, or that's open.
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if any other commissioners are feeling this way, but I'm finding it very distracting, on the screen anyway, to concentrate with the visual that Mr. Romano is projecting.
Well, I'll just, I'll just go off screen then, how's that?
Thanks, just a lot of movement, sorry.
Okay, does this work for everyone? Can everyone hear me?
As long as we can hear you, certainly.
Okay, great, great. So the, one of the other concerns, I think, was, were the, the regulations seem to encompass sale of alcohol, and I think that, that was brought to my attention on the last date. The reason why those regs incorporate anything regarding alcohol is because it really tracks the, the regs as Granby passed them. By no means should anyone be given the impression that because the regulations themselves, should the commission indeed approve these regulations, that any alcohol could be sold, because there's a permitting process, that a separate permitting process through the state that's required. And of course, these regs are separate and apart from that. So there would be two different, well, there would be a different state agency that would be supervising any sale of any alcohol. An additional point that was brought up last week, or actually was brought up during discussions between the last meeting, in this meeting, was the, the regulation number regarding fire pits. I can inform you that I did speak to the fire marshal in town, and he approved the wording, the verbiage that's contained therein. And I do believe that the, the verbiage limits the fire pits to the approval of the fire marshal. So any fire pits that would be, in existence, would have to have prior approval by the fire marshal. So I think those are some safety concerns that were raised at discussions. An additional, an additional point that was raised was a concern regarding specific decibel levels. And I think the point of the regs being worded the way that they are, are that sometimes having a decibel level is too restrictive. This, while it is subjective, the farm can still be held accountable. Should a police officer be called to the scene, and indeed, as it's discussed in the regulations, should the police officer be unable to have a discussion without a raised voice, then the police officer instructs the operator of the farm to then turn down the music. That's a very simple fix. And I know that when I've had events on my farm, and there's been an issue, that is how it has been resolved. There's been an inquiry that's been made, the police officers don't even have a, a decibel meter, they ask for it to be turned down, it's done. I mean, we all have to, as a community, be respectful of our neighbors and our neighbors' right to peace and enjoyment and quiet. And I think if farms are expected to function within residential neighborhoods, they need to abide by that type of consideration. I think the regulations incorporate that, and they balance the ability for a farm to be economically viable. And as discussed in the comments that were submitted, it's, right now, farming is a losing economic venture. And I think if the town wants to preserve the farms within its borders, passing regulations such as these will help maintain and continue and ensure the function, the successful function of these farms, rather than the land go-to development. I think that would be it for my presentation, as the regs speaks for themselves, and I do appreciate everyone's time.
All right, thank you, following our usual format. After, we'll have a brief recap by Town Planner. We'll then allow questions from the audience, we'll have questions from the commission, comments from the audience, comments from the commission. And at this point, we'll go back, Ms. Rodriguez, any recap comments, so forth?
Yes, I do, I, I have a revised report, I'd like to share that tonight. A lot of it is repetitive of the first report, but because it is revised, and I revised it based on some findings this afternoon and earlier today, and so that document is not up on the website. So for the benefit of all of you here, some of the members who were not here last month, and the public, I'd like to read that, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna stop share for a moment, because that's way too small.
Right. I was going to get a magnifying glass.
Okay, that's a little better, yes?
Yeah.
Great, so. In a memo to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, from myself, Jennifer Valentino Rodriguez, Director of Planning and Development, I have a revised report for you dated today, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is regarding a petition by Aaron J. Romano for a proposed zoning regulation text amendment to allow for the expansion of farm activities to include agritourism. At the applicant, Aaron J. Romano, has proposed a zoning regulation text amendment to allow for the expansion of farm activities to include agritourism. While there are farm-related definitions, agriculture and agritourism currently is not supported in the Bloomfield zoning regulations. Many farms, in particular small farms, remain viable through their ability to carry out activities that invite the general public to participate, in addition to their normal farming operations. Agritourism can be a boost to the local economy, provide additional recreational, educational, and entertainment activities for residents and tourists. The applicant met with staff to review the current definitions, as well as model regulations from towns such as Simsbury and Granby. Much of the language in the applicant's proposal reflects the language in those towns' regulations, some of the proposed language is modified. There are some general considerations. Section nine point six C of your regulations provides the commission with specific, does, decision, excuse me, decision considerations for your review and decision-making of regulatory changes. Some questions the commission might ask while you're doing your review. How does the amendment aid or contribute to the community? How might the amendment impact the community? How many properties and local farms would benefit from this regulation? I added fifteen or so, perhaps, per available data. This was through the farm until classifications that we have on file, including coding from the assessor's office. And at the end of this report, I've added a, a new map with areas for consideration. Does the amendment align with the plan of conservation and development, which I'll discuss below? Does the regulation protect public health, safety, welfare, property values? And finally, does the regulation help to attain the purpose of the regulations and the P O C D? I've added some recommended considerations, the applicant has mentioned a few. But in speaking with the applicant and neighbors, I've recommended the following topics to come into consideration. The applicant has not submitted a revision to the text. At this time, the applicant could consider revising the proposed regulation and bringing it forward to you. The commission can also consider the below that I've listed, and can consider modifying the request. So the, the things that I've listed include a minimum acreage, for example, five acres, or a different acreage that you might find appropriate. Considering noise, and whether that is by decibel, or simply understanding that there's a certain noise level, but restricting the hours of operation and frequency that, that kind of noise would exist from a particular event. Number three is traffic, including things like parking, fire, and police department review of applications and sign-off. Number four is the timeline for submitting applications to zoning staff. That's something that if the, these applications were going to go to staff, consider requiring three weeks prior to the event to allow staff, including fire, police, and others to review the application. So I mentioned before that your plan of conservation and development needs to be considered when you're looking at regulatory changes. On page thirty-two of the P O C D, the plan provides a number of goals, such as to preserve farmland, agricultural heritage, and specifically recognizes the importance of agritourism. And it, it's quoted agricultural tourism, or agritourism, is one alternative for improving the incomes and potential economic viability of small farms and rural communities. Page thirty-four, under Strategies and New Approaches, three point eleven, it states, evaluating land use regulations for agriculture and agritourism as a strategy to achieving farm viability and preservation. And then I've included a link there to the P O C D and to the map of agricultural areas as shown in the current P O C D. I've added a section here on timeline, just because it helps to keep us all on track. The hearing was opened on April twenty-eighth and continued to tonight's special meeting. The commission has sixty-five days to make a decision from the date that the hearing is open. The petitioner or applicant may consent to one or more extensions, provided the total extension of all periods shall not be for longer than sixty-five days. And I've just quoted the Connecticut General statutes where that process comes from. Regarding testimony, approximately one hundred pages of testimony, mostly emails, were submitted for staff and commission member review. Once the hearing is closed, no further testimony should be added to the record or considered by the commission. And it is important to review all submitted testimony before deliberating and decision-making. I just note that because if, for some reason, the commission wanted to close the hearing tonight, you could do that, but then no additional testimony can be considered. If the hearing is continued to another night, you could continue to take in testimony. So regarding decision-making, the commission can do three things. The commission can approve the application as proposed, or approve the application with modifications. And which modifications you can deliberate on and, and certainly make part of a motion this evening or at a future meeting. And then the third is deny the application. If the commission is not ready to make a decision tonight, you can either continue the hearing and continue to take testimony to a future meeting, or you can close the public hearing, discontinue taking testimony, and then you can still take time to review the regulation, testimony, and schedule deliberation and decision, decision-making for a future meeting. Just some procedural notes. When the commission acts on a regulatory change, it must state the reason for the decision on the record, state your findings and consistency with the plan of conservation and development, and also establish an effective date for that regulation to take place. I've included some examples of farms in Bloomfields. I did ask around to some of my peers and look online, I'm not completely familiar with all of the farms. So there are certainly more lands that are farmed, and each of these probably has individual types of farming. And then finally, I've just provided an updated map that our town engineer provided to me, based on those codes such as farm and till, including the assessor's exemptions for farm properties. So. Think I can minimize here to get the whole screen on. And so those are my final comments.
I really didn't think there was that much farmland in town.
That's about fifteen properties or so, at least as far as we were able to pull up.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Sixteen, yeah, fifteen, fifteen to sixteen, four, well, whatever. All right. At this point, while we mull that over, I think I'll open the meeting to questions from the audience. On your screen, there should be raise a hand. Logo icon at the bottom of the screen. Anyone who wishes to speak at this point, let's get in line and listen to any questions that the public might have.
Sure, it looks like Robert Klein.
Okay. Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein?
Are you able to unmute?
Yes, you muted, Mr. Klein.
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My first question was going to be if the town had identified, you know, all the different properties that would be covered by this particular change.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We have you listed as Robert Klein. You do not sound like a Robert to me. Would you please identify yourself by name and address, please?
Yes, we registered separately. I'm Elizabeth Klein.
Thank you.
Twenty-five Highwood Road.
Thank you.
I think that. Let's see, I lost my train of thought here. So thank you for letting us know how much of the acreage in town would likely be covered by such a change. I think that oftentimes, changes of this breadth and importance require a long, longer process than you just laid out for making a decision. I'm concerned that the way this change is currently written, it's very broad and more than just the noise and so on that you've already mentioned. And I think it opens us up for a lot of unintended consequences that we might be able to think about if we took a little more time than just tonight or however long you were thinking. And in its current form.
Mrs. Klein, please. Questions only. You'll have a chance later to make a long comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? All right.
Do you have, have you had a chance to think about the noise issue and how it affects the surrounding community? Or is this just the first time you've really been able to address that issue?
Just getting deeply into this, I'm sure every commissioner has that in the back of their mind.
Okay, I used to write noise ordinances.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Schulman, you have your hand up. Is there a question?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Very muted, but yes. Please identify yourself for the record.
Because I was having some difficulty. I've reviewed not a hundred percent.
Please identify yourself for the record.
The proposed regulations. Let me first say that people I've talked to, I'm sorry, Sidney Schulman in eight Highledge Road.
Thank you.
I, many of the people I've talked to in the High Hill neighborhood, I think everybody is in favor of the concept of agritourism. So their concerns deal with a lot of issues that we've had with events at our farm.
Mr. Schulman, Mr. Schulman.
Yes.
As I said to Mrs. Klein, we're taking questions at this point.
Oh, okay.
You'll be timed for statements later. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, my question is, upon what basis was the decision reached to permit music up until ten o'clock at night?
No decision has been made on anything yet, Mr. Schulman.
All right, well, inasmuch as no decision has been made, I would hold any further comment until we are permitted to speak.
Absolutely. You'll have your chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions only, please, questions?
Jenny Kelly?
Hi, for the record, Jenny Kelly, thirty-one High Hill. Um, this is a question for sure, but of course you can say, you know, sometimes it's hard to phrase it as a question versus a comment. But you've mentioned a lot about economic viability of farms, and I'm wondering if in the research, you've verified or read about the idea, you know, other than self-reported, if these farms are in fact struggling and, you know, and the idea that who, how many farms are proposing these regulations? Is it just two? Is it many? You know, do you have any verification of the idea that this is needed to keep these farms quote in business?
At the present time, we only have Mr. Romano's application to add this verbiage to our zoning regulations. As far as making a financial decision, I don't think that's the anything that we really have to consider. Unfortunately, we listen to a lot of zoning proposals where we know that the financial side of it may be a disaster. But we, I'm not sure if it's actual legislation, but I've always been told that we can't make decisions based on financial.
That answers my question. Thank you. Yeah, that's excellent. Thanks.
Any questions from the audience, from the attendees?
Claire Kendall?
Claire Kendall, yes, Ms. Kendall.
Thank you, and I do have three questions. One.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Absolutely, sir. Claire Kendall, twenty-seven High Hill Road, Bloomfield. One, my understanding from the town planner was that one of the criteria for this regulation change, the zoning change, was to ensure financial viability of the farms. So the first question is, is then financial viability supposed to be one of the factors to be considered?
Well, as I said earlier, it's my understanding that we really can't make a decision based on that. We're not.
For ill then, sir, right? Whether if it's, if they go broke without it or they are going to flourish with it, it doesn't matter?
Very early in my career on this commission, we approved the yogurt shop in the mall, Woodbury Mall, where we all said to ourselves, this guy's going to die here. And six months later, he was out of business.
I have to say, I've done the same, yes.
This is what happens. We can't. We'd be here forever if we had to start looking into the books and financing and income and history of income and how many animals they might have to contribute to whatever business they want to run. So I think that's beyond our scope of examination. We have a proposal before us by one agro-farmer or whatever the term might be for him at this point. And if we do accept it, if you do adopt something, from then on, each case has to stand unzoned. And those applicants have to make that financial decision.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. May I please ask the applicant a question?
Certainly.
Thank you. As was at the last hearing and tonight, the applicant has suggested there might be some changes that he would be willing to make. But one of the concerns raised last time, and so asking Mr. Romano, the regulation as written would permit three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Any event under two hundred people would be exempt from the regulation. And any property that was covered under this regulation could as of right hold events with less than two hundred people. And moreover, with the alcohol issue, they could at three hundred and sixty-five days have a winery, brewery, or distillery opened. And if you're allowed as of right as part of the zoning, well, the liquor license deals, doesn't deal with the things that zoning deals with. It deals with, well, are you going to be a responsible liquor provider? So one of the questions I have is, given the fact that there's a three hundred and sixty-five day a year impact on the neighboring properties, had you considered any amendments to alleviate those concerns, particularly the brewery, distillery, and winery and the events under two hundred?
Okay, so thank you for the question. So just so I'm clear about the question that's asked, let me try and take it in pieces if I can. And I just want to make sure that I'm answering them in turn. So the first question that I'd like to answer is the numerical automatic, I guess, the limitation where the permit would kick in. Is that, am I correct? So your concern was the two hundred per, or the two hundred number limitation, is that correct?
The correct, that's correct, that under two hundred, there would be no limit whatsoever, and only after two hundred there would be.
Right, the numerical limitation over the year. So yes, I did consider reducing that. I spoke with a member of the public who had some concerns, and I certainly am flexible with that on a personal basis. But I can't, certainly, I'm not speaking for any other farms that might be impacted by that. It's my application, but I'm certainly willing and flexible on that number. So that's, did that help answer your first question?
Well, I guess some of the question is, I mean, you haven't proposed an amendment to your application, and the only application before this commission is yours. So what number is it, are you willing to make an amendment? And if so, at what number?
Well, the number that I discussed with another interested individual for the town was fifty persons. And I think that's totally appropriate. I think, you know, I'm trying to think about my, you know, the economic viability. I know other people have said, you know, asked questions about economic viability of farm. But the concern that I have is there are minor types of events that I intend on having, as I have in the past, on the farm on a regular basis, such as yoga, drum circles, meditation and breath work. So those types of smaller gatherings, I mean, if I can get a dozen people to come to yoga, that's a miracle right there. That's a big turnout. But I do have plant walks where someone will come by and guide a group through the farm and will identify edible medicinal plants on the farm. And that might, that might get forty or fifty people to the farm. And I don't want an event like that to count towards, because you don't make any money on those events. The larger events are where I'm going to try and make some money back for the farm. So I think fifty is certainly fine.
May I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
So if you had fifty people or a limit of less than fifty people doesn't count towards the numerical count, would you also be willing to have a condition that said there would be no amplified music or noise? In other words, you could certainly, you know, play your drums, but you're not going to have it on a sound system blaring at the neighbors, you know, raising the noise level. Because again, even at less than fifty, that would still be a three hundred and sixty-five day rate. And we're not necessarily saying that's, I think fifty is a much more reasonable number than two hundred. But the question becomes, it's really the noise issue and the impact of the neighborhood that I think has people concerned. So how, which is, but it's a way to address that concern, sir.
Certainly. Well, so I think, so I think there can be built into the regulations, I think there already are, but I think there can be built into the regulations a noise limitation that is there. The concern that I have about the amplified music, as you suggested, with below fifty gathering, is just on a logistical basis. So I've had situations where, for instance, the medicinal plant guy who comes around, he has to amplify himself because there are fifty people spread out. With COVID, there had to be people, so, you know, social distancing. And so that did require modified, it required amplification, nothing to the degree of what a concert or a music event or performance might be, but something a lot more modified. And mind you, I'm just going to share with you my own personal experience. The town, because the town has not had regs, and I introduce these regs, because I was served with a seasoned assist last year, there were some complaints about another entity in the town and noise complaints, et cetera. Though I have policed myself with my neighbors, and as far as I know through my discussions with the town, there've never been any complaints about the events that I've held because I personally have respected the peace and quiet of my neighbors and always, whatever event I have, if it had amplification or music, I kept it at a minimum and I shut the music off at an agreed-upon time, and it did not disturb the neighbors. I think that can be achieved here as well.
If I can interject something at this point.
Yes.
Be the, during the course of our deliberations, the allowable number of participants or people would be the commission's responsibility to establish. And I think we're getting a little far afield on this. We understand your efforts, and I think that you successfully answered Ms. Kendall's question. That will be something that will rise and fall whether we accept or deny the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, may I ask for him to afford the applicant to have an opportunity to respond to the concern that we could have a winery, brewery, or distillery open three hundred?
That's another subject, certainly. That's another question.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, so at this juncture, I mean, I don't personally have any plans to have a winery or distillery. I'm trying to get zucchini in the ground. But that being said, to have the regulations in place, these regulations are almost identical to the regulations in Granby. And there are successful farms in Granby that have wineries specifically that have indoor, indoor spaces where they do serve wine or they have small events throughout the year. I think that would be part of the economic viability for the farm so that the farm isn't restricted to function just during farming, traditional farming months, but can continue to function throughout those months where actual farming is not taking place. But people can then buy, continue to buy, or they could consume conceivably some of the product that was derived from the farm itself.
So then, if I may ask a follow-up question with the chair's permission. Your proposed regulations only ask for ten percent to be grown or to be grown in Connecticut and has no requirement that the product is grown on the farm that's serving it?
I think that, I think that's the way the current, the current status is for other wineries, whether or not you may realize it or not. But if you go to Brignoli or you go to Lost Acres and you buy a bottle of wine there or you drink a bottle of wine, you're not drinking a bottle of wine where the grapes were grown exclusively on the farm. They're white labeling that and outsourcing it. Connecticut is not known for its wonderful wine grapes. There's a certain percentage of the grapes that have to be, that have to contribute toward that blend in order for it to be a Connecticut winery, but.
And I understand that, and I guess my question simply was is that, so basically, the regs as proposed do permit and would allow a three hundred and sixty-five day a year winery, brewery, or distillery.
Yeah, that would be part of our deliberations.
Well, I mean, that's, I'm just asking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was just trying to confirm that that's what the regulations are considering and what it, would the impact that would be if they are permitted? Those are my questions, Your Honor.
Okay, so to answer your question, it does. And then we can take a look at neighboring towns and see what impact it had on those communities, such as Granby.
Or, but, yeah, Simsbury doesn't. So I mean, so I would appreciate it, but thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schulman, can I ask you to wait, please? We've already, well, you didn't ask a question before. All right. Question only, Mr. Schulman.
Question only. Mr. Romano, would you be willing to modify the proposal to tie the number of people, however it's determined, to the parking of cars on-site as opposed to in the road?
Mr. Schulman, again, that's a deliberation of this commission. He's already submitted that, you know, his numbers.
All right, well, my other question, I have another question is to how you would propose to keep track of the number of people that are engaging in the activities on the, on the farm? And how would that distinguish?
I'm sure the police department would be involved. We're certainly not going to have a agro-tourism officer in town hall going around various farms. Someone complains, the police department investigates. Someone complains, the police department investigates ordinances and zoning laws prevail and we go on from there.
All right. Well, I had one or two more questions, but perhaps it'd be better than taken up in the comments.
Okay. Anyone else with a question?
Kevin Goff?
Yes, Mr. Goff.
Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge Drive. I have a question. I think it's addressed to the applicant, to the commission and to the planner. I'm having, I'm going to make comment in comments and I overall support this idea, this concept. But I would like to know how we can define agritourism before having an agricultural zone. It seems to me that all the questions and everything that's being asked relates to what is defined as agricultural. And so I would like to ask all the participants how this relates to agricultural zoning beforehand, before, you know, as a necessary condition before you talk about agritourism. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, do you have a?
Oh, yeah, sure. I can comment. So there, in every zone, there's a list of permitted uses. This would be a permitted use in, in any zones where the farms exist. So I guess that's one way to look at it, that it is a use, it's not a zone. What can happen is sometimes you can create some type of a floating zone that could be applied to a number of different properties. Certain, there, there is case law against spot zoning. So just zoning one particular property and not the others around it is considered spot zoning. So certainly creating a zone is something to consider, but I don't think that you can or that you must only allow a use as a list of, or under the list of permitted uses if there's a specific zone to that use. So, you know, is it something for consideration? Surely, yes. Do I think it's necessary in terms of adding a permitted use to existing zones? I don't think that's necessary, but those are just some thoughts.
Wouldn't the language be implicit in this regulation if it were adopted? The use would be?
So the regulation would apply to those properties that are categorized as, as a farm per state law and those that apply per the local policy.
Any other questions? Twenty-three people and only four questioners. All right, hearing none, we'll turn back to the commission. And Mr. Millet, any questions?
So, I guess one question I had was why include the campground category as part of the agritourism? That, that one kind of stuck out. Is that something that was just copied over from, from Granby? Or is that an idea that's kind of core to the applicant's request?
Mr. Mondo?
Could you repeat the question? I lost you there for.
Sure. So the inclusion of overnight lodging, camping as a category, was that something core to your request or was that something copied over from, say, some of the other towns that had input into this regulation proposal?
That, that was not something that was copied over. Granby has separate, so Granby has separate agricultural regs that govern overnight lodging entirely. So there was the, there were the agritourism regs that we see that are almost identical, that are before you, but there are separate agricultural regs they have governing farming. I saw that there were none during the, in the, in the current, in the agritourism regs. But knowing that there are, so there's, there are services similar to Airbnb. They're called Hip Camp. I don't know if you've ever heard of this. Hip Camp is an app that people can go on and then they can reserve a campsite overnight. And so someone can allow camping on their property through this Hip Camp service. The idea came to me because on several occasions in the last year, when I've had events, some people who went to the events asked if they could to stay overnight because they didn't want to drive home at a late hour or they wanted to assist with, you know, assist on the property with setup and takedown. And I wanted to make sure that this was covered in the regulations. So there are two, two different matters. One is the Hip Camp, which is an opportunity to also make a farm economically viable by having certain number of campsites available or a campsite available for a fee. The other is in conjunction with the events to have some camping there so that people aren't just stranded if they're unable to drive home and that they can stay overnight. And that has worked out well in the past. For me, I wouldn't have thought about it or included it had it not been successful with some of the events that I've held in the past. And I just wanted to make sure that everything is covered within the regs, rather than to just go ahead and assume that I can do something that might not be appropriate.
Would you consider some type of limit based on the size of acreage and location of, to neighbors and citing on that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's reasonable. I, I know that I've been approached by, for instance, I've been approached by a group. I don't know if you've ever heard of the C five people. So these are people who meditate as a group to try and have contact with aliens. And they've wanted open spaces where they can just gather in a circle and meditate and hopefully the aliens will come down and beam them up. And they're the type of people who might want to engage in an overnight to do that. We're not talking about people who would be, certainly, there would be noise limitations that would also apply as well. I mean, we're talking about really peaceful people.
Sure.
Yeah. It's not Woodstock, you know?
Okay. I, I think that was the majority of my questions. I have some thoughts I'll save for comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Blunt, questions?
For our town staff, how frequently do we have to approve special events for permits? And could this regulation as written now significantly affect the number of permits town staff would have to review and approve?
That's a great question and something that, over the last number of days, I've met with the zoning officer about. And even just today, we printed off a number of temporary types of permits that, or permit applications from other towns. We've gone through the regulations a number of times. There really is not, right now, a permit process for special events. And I think if there was, maybe, you know, some of these things, maybe last year or other seasons might have been handled differently. So this really opened, this whole discussion has opened up a good opportunity for Bloomfield. While they might not be specific to farm-related requests, building in some sort of temporary, you know, occasional event or seasonal permit really provides extra opportunity for a lot of property owners, organizations and also helps to minimize impact to neighbors. So right now, when someone has an event, the permit that we receive in our department really goes to the building division for a tent. The fire marshal and the building official looks at, when it's a certain size, they might look at it or the fire marshal might need to review and they look at things like wind load. So unless something is including some sort of a structure or perhaps it's a vendor that's out on the street and they go to the police department, there's really not a process or a venue for applicants to go to our department to look for a temporary permit. So this has widened our eyes, I think, offered enough, again, a door for opportunity. And so we're working on proposing a regulation for all of you to consider. And it's definitely a matter for discussion to be on a future agenda, for sure.
Thank you. That's all I have at the moment.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor? You're muted, sir.
Yep. There we go. I unfortunately. Was that me echoing back?
It was feedback from something, yeah.
Okay. I have a number, a lot of them which are technical about drafting, but one of them is this, all these activities are accessory or incidental uses associated with a primary farm use. How, and you have defined the limit on the primary farm use that would qualify as income of twenty-five hundred dollars or expenses of twenty-five hundred dollars. Is that annually? Is that you do it once in your farm forever? How do you, how would you suggest we police that?
So, Mr. Brown, is that a question for me?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes. So annually, I, I, it's poorly drafted. I apologize. That would be annual. So if someone doesn't have that type of expense or income, then certainly they wouldn't qualify. The, the figure that I took is the figure that you need to establish with the Department of Revenue Services in order to register as a farm and then file taxes as a farm for sales purposes. And so you have to show that twenty-five hundred dollars of income or expenses in order to qualify as a farm. So that's, it just tracked that, that rule, that agency rule.
Have you been able to find any other zoning regs in the state of Connecticut that have such a low threshold?
No, the Granby, I believe the Granby zoning regs had a higher threshold.
Granby's fifteen thousand, aren't they?
Yeah. The reason I, the reason I set it lower, frankly, is right now, I mean, if you consider certain farms, let's say you pass these regs, there are certain farms that will want to get off the ground and they may not have that income coming in. Last year, the bulk of the income in my particular farm came from, I think I made just as much selling eggs as I did during, for any other type of activity, whether it be vegetables or when I had a music event. But the five dollars a dozen was, was keeping me going. Now, right now, my hands are not laying and they should be laying. And so there, there are these types of things that occur with smaller farms where you, their acts have got and you just can't control them. Because the farms in, in Bloomfield are of a smaller acreage and of a smaller scale than those in Granby, that's where I scaled it down because just the production and the income that one could get in Bloomfield just is going to be smaller than those farms in Granby.
Did you find any other zoning ordinance in the state of Connecticut that allowed debt as a measure of a threshold?
I'm not, I didn't do a search. I did not do a search, but.
Usually these things are predicated on income from farming activity.
Yes.
Anybody can go out and borrow twenty-five hundred dollars and call it agricultural debt, is it?
Well, certainly. I guess, I guess at some point, there's going to have to be a good faith basis for someone to make that type of filing and, and then go ahead and make a claim that the twenty-five hundred dollars truly is for agricultural purposes. I know that I would not have a problem going ahead and doing that. I think we all as citizens, when we file our property taxes and our income taxes, the deductions we take and what we report, we are all on an honor system. And so I would hope, especially with the number of farms in Bloomfield that would qualify, that people would honestly present that in, in their, in their applications.
One of the things, and I have to preface my question, so I'm trying not to make comments, but one of the things I'm concerned about is that the threshold for farming performance is so low that one could call oneself a farm, have a miniscule farming performance and then have a winery, brewery, performance venue, distillery, farm store, limited farm store and restaurant. And that, that's where I'm, the intent to some of these questions is aimed at that. So what I'm looking for is the tests of how this would be, because I'm in favor of the concept, but I'm thinking, I have to assume, unfortunately, the worst. Not that you would do it, but somebody else would do it. So I'm looking for the bottom.
So I think, sure. So if I can just speak to that, I think there are several checks within the regulations. I think Ms. Valentina Rodriguez spoke to the qualifying properties within the town. There's already a limitation because they are only the properties that qualify as a farm under the definition of functioning farms within state. Second, I was agreeable, certainly, there's a question that was posed to me earlier and I think in the last hearing as well, as to an acreage, a minimum acreage parcel size that would apply. And I think that might be a good way to prevent what you're talking about, people taking advantage of these regulations, trying to fit themselves into that, that qualify, that to qualify to go ahead and, and take advantage of the agritourism regulations as, as they're written and try and stretch those definitions. But certainly, that's not my intention. I have a, a farm that I'm trying to get off the ground. And so, you know, it was written, it was written with certainly my farm in mind, but others similarly situated. But I do see your point.
I certainly understand that it's written with your farm in mind, but it's going to apply across the town to whatever parcel. So if, when you talk about a parcel, are you talking about a singular parcel? Are you talking about a swatch of land that can be accumulated? Can it be rented parcels? Can it be, you know, can, you know, for example, there is a, a field next to the Griffin line on Tonsis out toward Windsor. And it's, it is, every year, it is planted and grown. And I believe it's a rented field. There's no farm infrastructure on it. It's just there and it's used as farm parcel. If it's, if it's the right number of acres, would that be a farm that would be subject to these regulations?
I guess the, I guess the other, I guess there are several, several issues that you bring up. One is who would be the applicant, right? Would it be the tenant or would it be the owner? The, the second would be, does it qualify as a farm under the definition of farms as, as earlier referenced by Ms. Valentina Rodriguez? The third is, does it comport with the, the income requirements, income and or debt as, as proposed in the regulations?
So if I, I, I mean to interrupt you, but on that point, if I have a field, it's, it's planted full of corn and I harvest that corn and it goes to my general revenue. Do I generate twenty-five hundred dollars of income to qualify that field as a farm?
I don't understand what your term general revenue is.
When you have, if I'm a farmer, I rent fields all over Bloomfield. How do I, how do I qualify one of those fields as a farm for these regulations?
If you're a farmer who rents fields all over, I think each one, each parcel would be an individual farm. It would be an individual lot. I mean, you.
I would, I would think the same thing. I, actually, Mr. Mayor, if, if I own a lot of buildings in town, in fact, there's a building standing in the center of town right now that was looking for a tenant. We approved the use for that building based on the owner's application.
Right.
Now, if we start talking about open fields, you know, I'm, I'm gonna look for someone to raise the corn you're talking about. But some guy comes in who wants to raise garlic or grow cabbage. Grow cabbages.
My concern is that we don't have another zoning regulation that I'm aware of. That predicates qualification on financial performance. The, the, the guy in the center of town who wants to use in his apartment building, we have an apartment building. But we don't say that apartment building has to have twenty five hundred dollars in rent before it can do X. That's, that's, I, I'm.
I see your point.
I'm kind of flummoxed on some of the inconsistencies and technicalities in the drafting of this. I like the concept. I, I think there's many, many concepts mixed in here that have to be parsed out too. I like the concept, but the working of your proposal causes me a number of concerns. And I'm just trying to test those out to see if I'm, I'm messed up.
Well, wow, I don't think you're messed up. I, I, I think, I think what we're looking at is we're looking at different elements within the regs. And each one, there are several tests. So number one is there's the income and or debt requirement. That's number one. So if you meet that, you go to the next, it's like a flow chart. Do you have the acreage requirement? And then are you a functioning farm according to the definition? So, you know, farms have to, have to register, like I said, with DRS. And these farms that are registered, they, the measures through the town because they have the, the special status. I can't, can't remember the PA, I can't remember. Yeah, four ninety, exactly. So, I mean, there's a number of different checks here to ensure. That the abuse that you're talking about won't occur. And certainly if. You know. In my opinion, I, I don't, I think there will only be a very few qualified properties as identified. By Ms. Valentina Rodriguez that would currently qualify without the acres limitation. As, as proposed without that, that would even qualify under the, the proposed regs. Adding the acres limitation will go ahead and enhance the protections that you're concerned about. So I, I think that's a great idea.
This twenty five hundred dollar. Gateway, does that have its roots in the IRS somewhere? I mean.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. And I know that my accountant told me that I, I need to, I need to show that the twenty five hundred dollar. Income in order to qualify with DRS.
That's for a sales tax permit.
Yeah.
Oh.
It doesn't really have anything really to do with farming. It's a sales.
It permits, so, so when you have, when you show the twenty five hundred dollars income as a, as a farmer. You get a, you get a tax ID number to operate as a farm. So then you can, when you're purchasing feed or other products, you can use that tax ID number. And the tax is waived as long as it is for the farm. And so you have to show that. So it is a benefit that's conferred upon you that you, where you have to establish that income. So at some point, minds, the great minds within the state determined that, that that was the magic number. In order to obtain that tax benefit as a farmer.
Would have been a great income around eighteen sixty, but I don't know about.
Yeah, the, 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 the P A four ninety test is, is a different test for property tax relief. And that number is quite a bit higher.
Mr. Mayor, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but, but I've got a few. I, I spent a little time looking through your definitions. And I'm sort of flummoxed on what the difference between a limited farm store and a farm store is. I, I think the only one is that you say a limited farm store can't sell alcohol. But then you go on to talk about a farm store which also can't sell alcohol. That's why I'm, I'm sort of confused.
So the limited, so the limited farm store, if you're referring to just the alcohol. It seems as if the following are permitted by right. A limited farm store, which is subject to the following, which is alcohol is prohibited. And then we get to farm store. Keep the farm store, the commission may grant a special permit for the following. So that is permissive language that the commission may grant for the farm store to operate. But the limited farm store, which does not include alcohol would be as of right. And so that, that kind of touches on the concerns of the citizen who had questions earlier within the hearing. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I'm gonna have to go back and read it more carefully, but, and then.
So the limited, so my understanding is the limited farm store, which does not permit alcohol. So it's just a farms, a general kind of farm store is as of right, so it's permitted as of right. Whereas if there would be sales of alcohol, which like, as you stated, which would be the difference with the farm store. That is granted by special permit. So there has to be that review by the commission as opposed to it being as of right.
Okay, do you have a concept in here as far as you can see of site plan approval?
There, the verbiage is in here for the commission to approve the events. So because they're by special permit, they, they have to have that, that approval.
But if you wanted two hundred or less, a hundred and ninety nine people or less, you're talking about an expected at least sixty six cars. Sixty seven cars at the ratio of three to, three to one car.
If, if, if they are driving cars and not riding bicycles or.
Correct.
Yes.
But so you don't have, for those events, you don't have a site plan approval concept?
I don't, I, you know what, I can't find it in here. It may be in here somewhere.
I thought that was under number six, under permitted as of rate, requiring a layout plan at the end. I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Which subsection? Six, ah, okay, so it's under seven four B, the following are permitted by right. And subsection six, it says a layout plan narrative, including the type of products to be sold, activities to be conducted, including type and number hours operation. As required by the director planning development must be submitted, so compliance with seven point four may be determined.
So you would. So you would, you propose a site plan per event or annually? How do you, do you see this working?
Well, what I would, what I would be doing is I would be, I would have my, the, the events laid out. And you'd want to do this in one fell swoop. So if you were to have multiple events, you could use a single site plant and say, this is where the music would be. This is where parking would be. This is where the path from the parking to the music event would be. This is where the porta potty would be. This is where the hand washing station would be. And that would be the layout plan. That would be the site plan for the multiple events. It just would be too, it, it would be too, it would be unworkable if for every event. The farmer, the farm had to do that and then the towns would have to approve it. It would just be unworkable for everyone.
And then the, the last thing, I get your point there. The last thing on the, the enforcement penalties.
Yes.
Do you see that as having another step to the town's already provided enforcement provisions? Is there a preparatory requirement that you have that discussion? And you have to refer it to. The commission before a cease and desist can be issued?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not following your question. I really, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand it, but.
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying to say it, so. Under seven point four G, you've got a, a special provision like, like I haven't seen in our zoning before. Which is your failure to comply. Says that the, the zoning enforcement officer shall notify applicant in writing. Shall provide a reasonable time for compliance unless there's compliance in such time period. The commission may have a hearing to rescind, revoke or modify the special permit. All right, that is not what I understand our typical enforcement opportunities are. So is this in addition to that? Is this in lieu of a, a cease and desist be issued as, you know, you were talking about earlier?
So I'll be, I'll, I'll be quite honest with you. I'm, I'm unfamiliar with the, this specific enforcement. Penalties and provisions that are currently within the regulations. I, I put this in here, the abundance of caution. Given the fact that I've functioned well with my neighbors, I don't see myself falling within this. This provision as, as I'm understand it to work is if someone is suspected to be in violation. Or they're in violation of the, of the special permit, they receive, it sounds like a warning. And then if they don't apply corrective measures, then it goes to a hearing. And I don't know if that's, if that's currently. If that's. In, I, I don't know if that conflicts with the current regulations, but a, whether or not there is a, a warning process. Someone has to be warned of the violation. They either correct it or they don't. If they don't correct it, they go to a hearing.
What, what was the event that caused you or occasion the town to issue a cease and desist at your place? As you were talking about earlier.
I believe, from what I understand, that there were events occurring at another location. And based on the events that were occurring at a different location. They were citizen complaints about that location. And as a result of those complaints, a cease and desist was issued.
And there is nothing cited and that was occurring at your premises in the cease and desist?
There was, but I think my understanding in terms of the order of things. I had events that were planned and the cease and desist was then served on me as well. But there wasn't, the cease and desist was for me holding commercial activity within the residential zone. So it, because the regulations didn't exist, as I'm proposing them now. The only commerce that I could engage in on the farm was a farm stand and that was it. And I was trying to hold events such as these that are in the agritourism to bring people there, see music. Have burgers and hot dogs and, and, and go home and enjoy the farm. So I did have events that were set up. I was serving with the cease and desist. But I want to reiterate that as far as I know. There were no specific complaints from my neighbors for the activities that were conducted on my farm. Because again, I want to reiterate. I engaged in self policing and I engaged in. A conscious effort to make sure that I'm a good neighbor and my neighbors enjoyed. What I was doing in that it enhanced the quality of the neighborhood. And I think that's why there were no complaints.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I, I think that's plenty. Thank you.
Mister Chair, I can possibly speak to the types of permits that were, that Commissioner Mara asked about. Would, would you give me one moment to do that?
Certainly, go ahead.
Okay, all right, great. So I agree that in the enforcement section that's proposed here, seven four G. It's a little different than we're used to seeing. And often with zoning regulations, the enforcement process is for the zoning enforcement officer to issue a notice of violation. Or a cease and desist order, otherwise known as an enforcement order, that's appealable to the zoning board of appeals. Those things tend to relate to the underlying use that's approved or a previous use that's approved. That runs with the land. And so, you know, you might have, just for example, an industrial use that was approved three years ago. And they're noncompliant with their site plan. And so the commission can't revoke or take that use away because it runs with the land. But they can say that they're in violation of their site plan, for example. With this, I think what the applicant's suggesting, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. He's suggesting with this extra paragraph that this would be more of a temporary permit so that it is revocable. So that while you have the underlying use that runs with the land in perpetuity. This one is temporary and can be revoked and pulled back by the commission. So that's how I see that being different. I know other communities do that for temporary permits. Some communities do it for lake perm, lake communities and seasonal rentals. And those sorts of things where they have to be renewed each year and can be revoked if someone's regularly violating something. So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have one for the applicant. Mr. Romano. I wanted to know if you can just explain a little bit more to me about the campsite provision. And how that would be controlled and managed. And I guess. I have a concern where people come to your event. And, you know, there's alcohol and, you know, a good time and you, you may have people from out of town. This coming down and support you. How do you manage this overnight stay? And, and in terms of when your function is over. There could be a whole group of people that might decide that, well, we have our own alcohol in the trunk. And we're just going to kind of continue this on the campsite minus loud music. Can you kind of just give me a little bit better understanding on this?
Well, certainly that's where. Provisions could, could come into place. In terms of noise or rambunctious behavior, the police can be called at any time. Just envision a scenario in any neighborhood where someone wants to camp out outside. Or, or have a gathering late into the night and they want to engage in raucous, rowdy behavior. The police get called and they're told to, to, to turn it down. It's, it's a violation of state law. To breach the peace of neighbors. And, and that was, and certainly, you know, in my case. I've engaged in that sufficient self policing to ensure that that type of behavior never occurred. And that's why my neighbors are not in opposition and they've supported the, the endeavors that I've engaged in on the farm. But they would be breaking state law and, and I would encourage any neighbors to call the police. If there, if there is a behavior occurring in their neighborhood, whether or not it's on a farm or not, that's disturbing them. Because you have a right to, to be, you know, at peace in, 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 in your home. I don't know if that, if that helps.
Well, isn't this kind of opening a whole different can of worms from just the regular agritourism? Now with this possibly overnight camping and, you know, so forth and so on. How, how does this kind of. Relate to just your normal agricultural tourism business? It, it seems that this opens a different can of worms now. And I, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if this is actually necessary for agritourism.
So that's, that's, that's a good point. So one of the, so one of the issues that I faced when I was having the events. As I discussed earlier, were situations where. People and, and they just want to be perfectly clear, I never served alcohol at any of the events. But people, they brought their own and they didn't feel safe driving home. And they asked if they could just stay overnight and pitch a tent. And I, I allowed them to do so. It worked out. There were no issues. I didn't even know when, when I got up the next morning, they were gone. And I didn't even know that they were there. Now, I can see situations because what we have to do is plan for the worst. We have to plan for situations where people are not accommodating and people are not being good neighbors. Is it necessary? I put it in there because I faced that specific situation on occasion. And I did not want to engage in any type of behavior that might not be permitted. And so that's why I put it in there because it was successful for me. If the commission feels as though it's unnecessary and they want to restrict that, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. You know, the goal here is to make this farm functioning. And if there are those restrictions, I think on a personal level, I certainly can, can make. this farm functioning and if there are those restrictions, I think on a personal level, I certainly can, can make the farm function without that.
Okay, good, because I, I do have a problem with that.
Sure. And I can, and I can understa, I can totally understand why.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Mister Hussein, you're up next. Mister Hussein?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, just to pick up on the overnight lodging. And thanks for bringing out Byron. I had as one of my question, but is that a best practice or is that language in Simms Berry, Granby and those other regs?
The language that, as I stated earlier, that like, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. That was referred to you, Mister Romano. Yeah. Is that language in the Granby?
No, as, as I stated earlier, that's language that I inserted there. Granby has separate regulations. One is the agritourism regulations that I brought over almost verbatim. They had separate regulations dealing with farm and farm activity. And within their farm activity regulations, they have regulations regarding overnight lodging, presumably for those who are agricultural workers. So that there would be accommodations for them if people were brought from out of state or people wanted to just work on the farms. I haven't faced that situation yet. I could envision a scenario where perhaps there are people from New York City. I know there are some people who expressed interest in coming to the farm and then camping for a week and working on the farm, you know, who
We've just lost Mister Romano.
Yeah, we're losing you.
Mister Romano, we're getting terrible reception from you.
But of course, you know, if the town has
I think, I think it's good, Mister Romano, I think I'm good.
Anything else, Mister Hussein?
No, I did, I have some more questions, but I think your response is, no, it's not in the Grand B regs or the Sims Berry for this language. All right. Question for Jennifer. Of the farms you've listed or some of the fifteen farms you've mentioned, do you know what's the number of five oh one C threes that are present?
I'm not sure of five oh one C three status. I'd have to look at the assessor's data to see which ones have the PA four ninety exemption. Is that what you're referring to or just?
Yeah, the nonprofit, right. Yeah, the nonprofits. I'd like, I would ideally like to see what that delineation is. Because obviously if the majority of the farms are five oh one C three or not for profit, that would be beneficial in helping with, you know, some of the decisions here. So.
I believe, I believe in order to, for those to end up on the map, they were, they came from our local database on the classification as till or farm. And in order for that to happen, they're coded through the assessor's office. So I believe all of the ones on the map are, but I can also ask for the text list so we can read that.
If, if, if I'm, if I may, Mister Hussein and Miss Valentina Rodriguez, I don't know, there's, you were asking about five oh one C three nonprofits, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then this we're talking about.
You're breaking up, Mister Romano. We can't.
You have to find a good spot, Mister Romano.
Okay, and trying to find a sweet spot. Okay.
Take off your video. Take off your, your for now to help with your bandwidth.
Okay. How does this work?
Sounds better.
Okay, great. Okay, so I think there may have been a misunderstanding. So Miss Valentina Rodriguez, you were, you were addressing which farms qualify under PA four ninety. And, and I believe Mister Hussein, you were asking about five oh one C threes, which are nonprofit ventures. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think there may, may have been a miss, a miscommunication there.
Yeah, that was gonna be my follow-up, Jennifer. You said all fifteen, which I doubt all fifteen are five oh one C three nonprofits, the farms that you listed on the map, correct? So you're, you're going to get back with at least a preliminary list later of a five oh one C nonprofit?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, and you'd mentioned something about a special permit and it brought to my attention that these are temporary permits. And you said, what is the statutes in those? What are the timelines? Is that, are those one year? Usually those special permits, if we wanted, if, if someone wanted to have an event or something, those permits are for how long? Generally.
Was that a question for me?
Yes, Jennifer, sorry. Yeah, for a special permit for per this regulations right now. You said it'll be a temporary permit. What's the length of those, that permit? I mean, let's assume it was for one of the farm, the bars or, you know, the, you know, I mean, the store, the farm store that allows.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's something like a farm store where it's a permanent structure and it's a continued use and that's how it's applied for. Generally, under the state statutes, the approvals are for, their permits are five years and that's, within that five years, those would be implemented. But the use on the property is runs with the land. If it's applied for as a temporary permit, it would have a, a defined time. And so that would depend on what's applied for. Is it for a daily event? Not daily, but like a one day event or, you know, five, five Fridays out of the summer, it would just depend on what's applied for.
So if there's any violation at any point, that permit can be pulled, obviously, based on the enforcement and so forth. Actually, that was leading to, my real question is most of these, the owner of the farm might not be the applicant. So what if Mister Romano decides to rent me or allow me to pull a permit to hold an event on his farm? Or I'll, I'll ask Mister Romano this question and, and I didn't, I didn't promise to uphold everything that I did per the permit. Who bears responsibility at that point? Would you then, if the town comes after, will it be me as the permit, the committee or you as the owner? Or you can just say, hey, I, I'm the owner. I allowed him to pull the special permit. Who takes on that? Who would you see and holds, will be held liable for that, Mister Romano and actually Jennifer?
I can answer. From the town's perspective, we do require property owner signature on applications, just so we know all parties are on board. And then when it comes to enforcement, the enforcement goes to the property owner. But any, anytime you know someone else's party or involved somehow, the order can also be copied to that person as well.
And that would be clearly defined in this provision as part of being under our, our statutes or our ordinance, is this correct? Or is this, I'm saying specifically for this provision, I guess.
That's actually across the board.
Okay, it doesn't matter what the language states here.
Correct.
Okay. And I, I, and I think I've read the majority of the comments so far from, from citizens. And, you know, there's been a lot of support and for the ones that don't have the support, it's a common theme of the noise and the music or the parking and so forth. I'm sure a lot of people will ask questions, but I still want to re-ask for the record for the music section, seven point four dash B five, I'm sorry, I have to pull it up here again, seven point four B part five. And let's see, where, where was my question here? Four B, part five, agricultural events, right, part three. And it says music or live entertainment may be permitted in conjunction with an agricultural event subject to the following. And I know, and I think you've mentioned sometimes, you know, it's early as ten AM and shall be no later than ten PM. And we discussed, you know, the noise at the property line and conversation and so forth. But what does our noise ordinance say in terms of this type of activity, permitted activity? Is it the same ten AM to ten PM Bloomfields? Jennifer, sorry.
Sorry, I trouble on unmuting. There's a little window that's open right over the mute button. I'm actually not positive. I, I can pull up that noise ordinance right now. But I'm not, I'm not positive.
I just wanted to, yeah, in the meantime, you're pulling that up. I just, just wanted to see what, if we are going to be consistently with that same timeline or if this is, is outside of that timeline to see if we can pull it back in with that ordinance.
Well, I think we can adjust that during our deliberations.
Correct, yeah. And then, I know, I don't want to spend too much time, but the last thing, and I think we, we mentioned this, is the parking for special events will be reviewed by, I believe, also the town engineer. And I, I don't remember if it came to the commission, but I think it is reviewed by someone by the town if there is parking. And if there's an event that requires additional parking, including the fire marshal, if there's parking on, on the roadways, right, correct? Within right of way? Okay. All right, I'll be far for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, I see we have a new member.
Thank you.
Bloomfield Dems is our new member.
I'm sorry, I had to leave my location for half an hour, so I'll be, I'll be back at my desk shortly. It's Michelle. Sorry.
Any questions?
Yes, um, question, Mister Romano, how many of the neighbors have you spoken to about this proposition?
About, about these regs, I haven't run these regs by anyone. I submitted them. Yeah, I, I submitted them.
Okay, did you, do you, do you think you have any neighbors buy in or are they, do you know where they stand with, with, with this as far as, you know, just being a good neighbor kind of thing?
Again, as I stated earlier today, my, my understanding is no neighbors have ever complained about any past activities. Which, and this, this would be consistent, these would be, well, consistent up to a degree with the nature and the quality of the activities that I was engaging in before, where there were no there were no complaints. So I know that when the cease and desist was originally served and I requested an appeal, there were letters of support that were sent over for that hearing initially, but I withdrew that, that, that appeal last year.
Anything else?
Mister Chairman. Commissioner Adams is
Sorry, sorry. I was talking to the mute button. I'm sorry. Are you a five oh one C three and pardon me asking again if you've already answered this?
No, I'm not a five oh one C three. I'm a, I'm losing money on this, that's true.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. That'll be it for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Mister Romano, one question is there's been an underlying current, more or less, that people are turning towards this camping facet of your application. Under your present conditions, when you've had people stay overnight, how do you handle sanitary conditions in terms of bathroom facilities, drinking water? I assume there's no shower or anything like that available. But in terms of camping over campgrounds that I've gone to in the distant past, there are always community bathrooms, community washrooms, community showers for that matter. Is that something that we're gonna have to cobble into this or is any thought given to that in your part?
So part of the, this, the plan, the site plan would include porta potties. So there would be, you know, privies and bathroom facilities. When there's food served, there's, there's always, I have to get approval from, from the town for hand washing stations. There's, so in terms of that, there's bathroom facilities, there's the ability for people to, to wash their hands and, and you know, engage in sanitary kind of handshakes, I guess. And, and outside of that, I, I'm not, I don't have an extended, the intention is not to have an extended stay campground with, with showers and, and the like. But in the event that some people need to stay overnight, one or two people, three people, I can accommodate them as opposed to being, running afoul of the law by allowing a couple of people to stay overnight. And, and that's why I incorporated it because again, it happened several times over the last year. It worked well and in the abundance of caution, I put it in these regs because I didn't want to have regs passed. And then again, for me to permit someone to stay overnight and run afoul from the reg. So if the commission decides that it's uncomfortable with that provision and wants to strike it, I don't, I'm fine abiding by that. My intention is to fully comply with the regulations as they're passed by the commission. And I appreciate the, the, the time and the effort, the concern and the questions that all the members have, have posed to me.
Interesting. You brought up an aspect I hadn't even thought of. If you're serving food, we now have a Department of Health crack in the system that will have to be discussed and accounted for. I see Mister Klein has his hand up. We don't normally go back to the public for a second round of questions, but Mister Klein, if you have something.
Mister Chairman, please excuse the interruption. Just wondering if I can ask one more question before we go back to the public?
Sure, certainly.
Just a quick one to the applicant. What's the status of the cease and desist order from last year? I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
So initially I appealed the cease and desist order and then I withdrew the appeal.
So are you currently under a cease and desist order then?
I'm certainly abiding by the cease and desist order. If, if it is, if it is, if it is in effect, I'm certainly not engaging the activities that the cease and desist order covered.
Are you still having any events on your property?
Not as of now, no.
Just the zucchini. Okay.
Zucchini is self-propagating. Mister Klein, do you have your hand up or is that just an error?
That's an error.
Oh, thank you. All right, back to the public. Any comments? If you have them, please hit the Mister Schulman, you're quick on the trigger. You are, you're all yours, sir. And I would like to make an appeal, anyone who's going to make a comment. Let's try to be succinct and not turn this into a fifteen to twenty minute oratory. Mister Schulman, your statement, comment.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. First, I'd like to say that I am supportive of the idea of agritourism. The devil is in the details, as they say. Excuse me. I have a number of comments. I'll try to keep them fairly short. Although that may be difficult. The concern, we have concerns and a lot of people in my neighborhood have concerns, frankly, less concerned with Mister Romano's operation. Having some knowledge of how it's done than I am with the overall idea of farms in Bloomfield. Who may or may not take advantage of some concerns that we have. There are a lot of farms, there are a number of farms in Bloomfield that might seek to take advantage of this agritourism provision. One concern I have is the, the relationship of the number of people permitted at an event and the parking provided for that event. As just an, an example, if there were two hundred people and you threw an average of four people per car, you're talking about fifty cars. And I strongly feel that whatever provision is made for parking should be on-site as opposed to on the street. In other words, the minimum number of parking places permitted should be on the property or on-site. If there was to be something added to that in the street, well, that's a different story. And of course, the police department and others can have a role in that. But at least if you're going to have X number of people on the property, they should be required to have a certain number of parking places. Second of all, with respect to the time periods for the entertainment and music. A lot of people that I've talked to, we have about seventy households in my neighborhood. The high health neighborhood, the, and I'm sorry, I live at eight, excuse me, eight high ledge road. The, when you have music going to ten o'clock at night without any notation about whether you're talking about a Friday or Saturday or a Sunday night or during the week when people have to go work the next day, that's of great concern. There was a comment about, well, you can go to the police department, but this kind of thing should not be left to who's too sensitive and therefore runs to the police department and says, gee, you know, I can't sleep. I can hear the noise. I can hear the music. I don't like that kind of music or whatever. and says, gee, you know, I can't sleep, I can hear the noise, I can hear the music, I don't like that kind of music or whatever. I strongly suggest that it be limited to maybe eight o'clock at night instead of ten o'clock at night. As far as the overnights and the camping, that is pretty much as I read in the proposed regulations. Pretty much undefined. And I appreciate Mr. Romano's comments, and I do recommend that the camping portion be taken out of any proposed regulations. The other thing is, if you invite people to come on your property, and I've attended one of Mr. Romano's events and, of course, a lot of our farm events, and people come and go. So if you have an event where people are going to come and go, how do you keep track of whether there's fifty people there, a hundred or two hundred or whatever? Is there an admission fee? Is there is there closed gates so somebody can't go in? A lot of the ones I've gone to is just, you know, come and go, and maybe it should be come and go. And maybe there shouldn't be any specific requirement as to people, at least during the day. But maybe there should be at night. And again, this is a question of definition. And how do you count those people are in many situations that I've seen. They may say that children under six or children under ten are not counted as a permitted person. So if somebody comes with four kids, is that five people or is that one person and four children? I think that kind of thing has to be looked at when you look at the the regulations. Regulations regarding the definition regarding farm are fairly easy. It's the auxiliary usage that is the problem and is the auxiliary usage that's the problem with a lot of the people that I've talked to. Now, just going to the regulations themselves. As far as alcohol. If you're going to have a brewery, you're going to have a brewery. Some people may feel differently about wine, wine farms as opposed to breweries as opposed to a distillery. Are you going to have a distillery mechanisms on the on the farm? Is that going to be permitted? I suggest probably not. Then if you go, this was mentioned before, and that's the difference between a farm store and a limited farm store. And I know it on page three where it talks about farm stores and definitions and what is permitted. That and four seven four B subsection six. A limited farm store which has fewer usage that does not meet the above criteria shall be considered a farm store. That's, I think, confusing language. Which are you talking about the criteria that says there is no seating? In other words, within subsection two. Or are you talking about a limited farm store that does not meet the criteria for a farm store? In which case, why would it be considered a farm store? I just think the language is very, very confusing and has to be ironed out. We don't want it to be counterproductive and have the definitionally be count definition be counterintuitive. Again, let's see, I talked about time of day. I also shared, I didn't realize Attorney Merrill was going to raise it, but I have as a note that I thought that twenty-five hundred was rather low for a limit, if indeed there should be a limit at all. In a farm store, you're talking about seating that seating is permitted in a farm store. Presumably, let's say somebody comes in by sandwiches or whatever, that's fine, but what how much seating? And can you have, to exaggerate, to make a point, can you have an amphitheater within the structure, the barn that's called the farm store, so that you have four hundred seats in there? I don't know. And I think that has to be further defined. And under seven four C subsection one one, it does say the farm store may provide seating for the public and tables. Where food and beverages may be consumed, but there's no rationale as to how many or what we're trying to accomplish with this. I'd like to just mention one other thing. There was a number of comments about something as a matter of right or something as a matter of obtaining some kind of permission. I can think I can tell you that when something is written or perceived as a matter of right. It is very difficult to deny that if it meets the criteria that's set forth. It's a lot easier to leave it as a permissive use, which can be denied or not denied. And so I'd be very, very careful in drafting these regulations as to what is considered a matter of right as opposed to a privilege, if you will. See, I put a double asterisk next to the overnight logic because if if you have a private home and you want somebody to stay in a bedroom near your home, you can let one or two people stay there. And I appreciate certainly Mr. Romano's Romano's sensitivity to the question of whether it violates anything or not. But again, you know, if you have a house on the property and you want to have somebody stay at your house overnight, whom you know, that's one thing. I don't think people that come should have to make provisions for themselves as to where they're going to stay overnight, which comes to show. There are a number of provisions here about nine AM to ten AM, events may take place. The weather includes music or not. Again, I I suggest that events be limited to maybe eight o'clock as a reasonable alternative. Those in the general comments I make, that one one specifically, I I would also urge that you have to make a decision within a certain number of days. I understand and realize that. But I strongly suggest that the time be taken in coordination with counsel for the TPZ and the members of the TPZ to carefully consider the details that I mentioned. And many others that were mentioned by all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. That's a cause in life.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Klein, I've had your hand up again.
I I am sad to say that I am finished with my commentary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, you're muted if you're trying to speak. You have a comment, sir?
That comes up automatically. It's a mistake.
Oh, the hand comes up automatically? Okay.
Yeah.
Miss Kendall, time for comment.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the commission's attention to this matter. I have seven very quick points and I will be quick. First of all, the I think that this commission has a fourth choice. You can reject the application and then proceed with regulations and would proceed in a full regulatory fashion to consider it. There is in this application a kind of a wish list. A lot of things were thrown in, and I don't think they were all fully thought out, and I don't think the implications of them were thought out. And there an admission that there was no consulting with neighbors, there was no community input. It was simply, we'll look and see what other places are doing, we'll pull things, something together, we'll submit an application. I would ask this commission to reject the application or proceed with regulations on agrotourism because, you know, I personally, I believe a fair number of the community members are very much in support of many concepts in this. But with all due respect to the applicant, they're not fully fleshed out and they're a little bit half baked. And so let me go to the second point. There was certainly cherry picking, and you would expect that in an application of things that were most, you know, supportive of this application. But the definition of a farm should be ten acres or more. And the limit of income should be no less than fifteen thousand. That if you're going to, it should be your primary business as being a farm as opposed to making hundreds of thousands of dollars being a full-time entertainment venue. Three, on the noise, you need real noise ordinances, and it should simply apply to the town's noise ordinance. The towns, you know, there's no reason why farms should be treated any different than any other business. If they're going to act as a business, they should have to apply by the noise ordinances that are applicable to businesses that are next to residential areas. For one of the provisions in a neighboring agritourism zoning in Simsbury has not been included in this application, and that was Simsbury had a you shall do everything possible to minimize the impact on the neighbors. And that was submitted as the language of that was submitted in our comments and submitted at the first hearing. And we would ask that if you are going to go forward and grant the application, that you include some provision like that that gives the neighborhood some some support and some protection of what was can be a pretty major impact on their neighboring on the neighboring properties. Five, hip camp. Yeah, I love the fact, and I sometimes I really feel like a dinosaur, and I have to say, so I immediately looked it up. And it's basically Airbnb with a lean to, like you would see, you know, the White Mountains, you basically put on a metal, you put on a you know, plat wood platform, you put glamping on there, you put a little tent there and you say, hi, I'll rent it out for a hundred dollars a night. And there's two of them in Connecticut right now out in Litchfield and Woodsfield Hills. We do not need that. We should not have that. And if we're going to have basically Airbnb for in campsites and sort of without adequate facilities, I think we really do, that's sort of is proof positive of this application is kind of a wish list of any possibility, and we really should have a full regulatory analysis. And I would urge the commissioners to kindly look up hip camp. It was kind of fun to see, but it's a little horrifying to think you could have a hundred hip camp of facilities on my next door property. Next is a three hundred and sixty-five day usage. There's nothing in this application that would stop someone as a right to use their property in a commercial fashion, in an entertainment fashion, not a farming fashion, three hundred and sixty-five days. That is a very major change in property usage. And another reason why we would respectfully ask that you go through a full regulatory process if you're going to let anything like that occur. And finally, you know, a liquor license is not the same as, you know, having a winery, brewery or distillery as of right. And that's also feeds into my three hundred and sixty-five day concern that basically we have you know, Hooker Brewery at our farm, for example. Now, Hooker Brewery right now is in a commercial section of town. And I think there's a reason why it's in the commercial section of town, certainly, I mean, certainly the making it there as well, but you know what I mean? Having it sort of full time, you know, next, you know, not that far away from somebody's backyard is a very major change. And we would ask that you would also reject any ability to do that or come up with very separate and different regulations if you're going to start permitting wineries, breweries and distilleries because it's basically just opening up an entertainment venue because they don't have to grow anything on that particular property to do it. Comments? And I apologize, my husband is here and he wants to make separate comments because we are two individuals. He will also be quick, and I appreciate your courtesy listening to our concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Kendall, twenty-seven High Hill Road in Bloomfield. I second all of those comments that Claire just made. I only wanted to make one additional one, which was not in our written comments. Which is that I noticed that on Ms. Valentina Rodriguez's presentation, one of the items that the commission is supposed to consider is the Bloomfield Plan of Conservation and Development. And I did notice as well that one of the items on the Bloomfield Plan is preservation of wildlife and being careful to preserve wildlife habitats and corridors. And at least with respect to some of the farms, and our farm would be one of them. The area that we live in is a fairly major wildlife corridor. We have bears, foxes, deer. All turkeys, all manner of wildlife that that just wander through, and it's part of a very important wildlife corridor. If our farm was operating as an entertainment venue most of the year as opposed to a farm venue that could have a significant impact on that, which I think has not really been evaluated or taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Mr. Huff, you have your hand up? Kevin Huff?
Oh, Goff.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Barry. Yeah.
I moved you back in the alphabet a little bit, Kevin.
That's okay. Thank you, Barry. So yeah, Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge Drive. First of all, I I want to predicate a couple of remarks that I totally support the concept that Mr. Romano is trying to promote here. I think that agrotourism is extremely important for Bloomfield. And I am a staunch supporter. I have read the proposed regulation. I largely agree with it. But I think there is a problem, and I think it is the cart before the horse. I think Mr. Mara, Commissioner Mara referred to this. I think a number of commissioners have referred to this. I frankly do not believe we can do an agrotourism regulation without an agricultural zone. I think the the fundamental question here is what property is classified as agricultural? And I think that that is, you know, that is paramount to this whole situation. It is paramount to trying to preserve the agricultural heritage of Bloomfield. It is paramount to trying to create a agricultural future for Bloomfield. So I want to make it clear that I have texted the planner, Planner Rodriguez, Valentina Rodriguez. And I plan on introducing an agricultural zone in within the next week. So I would ask that any consideration of an agrotourism regulation be postponed until we discuss the overall issue of agricultural zone. And then agrotourism regulation would only apply within an agricultural zone. So the only way that you could apply an agrotourism criteria would be if you had rezoned your property to agricultural. I think this is, I think this is critical, and I think this is the fundamental issue that everyone is sort of looking at. So at this point, I I think that, you know, I again, I strongly support the idea of agrotourism. I strongly support what Mr. Romano is trying to do with his farm. I strongly support other agricultural properties in this community. But I think we need to step back and I think we need to define an agricultural zone before we move ahead in any manner. The last thing I would like to say is I would like to also go back to Commissioner Blint's comment about meetings per se and distractions. I would like to see these meetings become in person. I would like to see these meetings become real meetings of a commission again, not Zoom meetings. And I think that's another an ancillary issue to this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Anyone? Ms. Kelly? You're muted.
Sorry, yes, I unraised my hand before I unmuted, sorry. I am at thirty-one High Hill Road. I just am addressing, I think you will call it, I think it's Ms. Adams. She had asked Attorney Romano if he had his, you know, had spoken with his neighbors. And of course, he himself has not spoken with his neighbors, but and and he had said, okay, my neighbors don't necessarily have an issue with with these events because they haven't spoken. But I guess I just thought that I would just comment as a neighbor who's not Mr. Romano's neighbor, but a farm neighbor and is incredibly concerned and upset with the idea that my backyard in the house that I share with my family, with my young son, who has been. um, in the house that I share with my family, with my young son, um, who has been woken up by the um, events that happen. You know, the the unlimited bar weddings that have happened behind my house, um, stuff like that, that are, you know, were put on by farms. Um, it is affecting um, our property. It is affecting our home in a very fundamental way. It's a thing that I don't think anybody on this um, commission would want to have in their backyard. Um, so while, you know, it is, I I whatever, I I just would want you to consider, you know, that this is real people's homes that they share with their families. Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Anyone else in the audience with a comment? I don't want to sound like an auctioneer, but going once.
Yeah, there are a number of people. Um, I believe David Kopp was next, if I go in order of what I see.
No, he's not on my, okay, fine. There he is, okay. Mr. Kopp.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, my name is David Kopp. I live at one sixty-four Bell Bray Drive in Bloomfield. Um, I will be brief, but I'd like to be responsive to some of the comments that you've heard already. My wife and I are residents of the Bell Bray condominium association. Uh, we live immediately adjacent to the farm, right next door to it. I can see it right out of my, my bedroom window. Um.
Would you please identify that as our farm, I assume?
Our farm, it's called our farm.
Yes.
Um, and it is a five oh one C three, which provides uh, many benefits to the community, including regular visits by the schoolchildren in Bloomfield and Hartford and other communities. Also, um, over the years, I've come to become a volunteer there at our farm, as have other Bell Bray residents. And I'm on the, I'm a member of the Board of Directors there now. Um, I will be brief. My wife and I enjoy the farm very much. As our neighbor, um, we consider ourselves very fortunate that the land has not been developed. Um, that means that it has to be viable for it financially viable to avoid development. Generally, the farm is quiet and peaceful. Um, we find it to be a very good place to walk and reflect as do others um, in our community. Uh, we also enjoy seeing the many schoolchildren who come to visit and benefit from the schools in Bloomfield and Hartford and other towns. Uh, Bell Bray has about a hundred and fifty units here. Um, to the best of my knowledge, there have been no complaints from any Bell Bray residents about the farm over the years. Uh, on the contrary, the neighbors express how, how much they appreciate having the farm as a neighbors. Many of the residents are contributors and many also volunteer at the farm. Um, I think Bloomfield is very fortunate to have the farm, which as I mentioned, is a five oh one C three. I would guess if you look at your records, you'll find many of the farms are not, but we are. I um, am speaking here to support the proposed agritourism amendment to the zoning regulations. The proposed amendment will enable our farm to hold a limited number of events and expand outdoor recreational activities that are compatible with the farm. In this way, the amendment would help our farm remain financially viable, to fulfill its mission, which is to inspire children and adults to engage in, learn about and enjoy agriculture science and the natural environment. Of course, if these men, if the regulation were adopted, uh, these activities would remain subject to other pertinent town regulations, including, for example, the existing noise ordinance. Um, other towns like Simsbury and Granby have adopted regulations like this to expand activities on the farm. Um, these regulations help farms to stay viable and to maintain land as open space. So we respectfully request that the, that Bloomfield adopt the proposed text amendments to help our farm and other farms in Bloomfield to remain open and to serve the community. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kopp. Anyone else you have?
As I'll name just the next three that I can see. That way everyone knows which order to unmute, if that's okay. Uh, Zachary Duda, Mary Everly, and then Seth Klein.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Duda, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So my name is Zachary Duda and although I am a spry twenty-two, it is eleven minutes past my bedtime. So I will keep this. Um, so, um, as I said, uh, my name is Zach Duda. I work at the four H Education Center at our farm here in Bloomfield and I am the Farm Business Enterprise Manager and I've been here for going on a year now. And I've had the privilege of meeting countless members of the Bloomfield community and I've gotten to work directly alongside a lot of students through the Harris Agroscience and Technology Education Center, which is at the high school. And I taught STEM to students at Carmen Ray's Intermediate School. So I've been fortunate enough to see the future of this community, the students and the families that make Bloomfield a beautiful place to be. Uh, but before I came here, I had the privilege of doing a project when I was a senior at the University of Connecticut. We got to go around the state of Connecticut and uh, make a documentary about agriculture. That's where I came across our farm. Um, and we got to travel to eleven different farms, agricultural businesses and educational facilities. And it was at this time that I started to realize the value of agritourism um, and how it serves farms and how they serve as pillars in their communities. And so, one thing I wanted to note is one farm we visited, Osawaga Farm in Putnam. They're three quarters of an acre and on that three quarters of an acre, they make over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And they provide over a hundred CSA, Community Supported Agricultural uh, baskets. Um, they support their community on a, on a very small farm and they do it well. And so when we were traveling across the state, uh, more often than not, um, we thought of agritourism not just in terms of pick your own orchards, fall festivals or wine tastings. Um, as John Zen of Zen Tree Farm told us, he doesn't sell trees, he sells experiences. And so small farms, we realized through their existence and tradition are that experience. And so I think here in Bloomfield, what is really amazing is that there are places that we have that can make those experiences. Uh, the farms that can pro- provide the community development and that local economy. And agricultural businesses and organizations, they have that foundation here to serve communities. Uh, not just here in Bloomfield, but neighboring towns, working at our farm. I've seen people from Simsbury, Hartford, Granby, Suffield come here and and enjoy uh, the natural beauty, but also gain an authentic agricultural experience. And I think agritourism is a tool that allows us to make that happen here and if we can, you know, uh, develop that umbrella, uh, more people can have those experiences right here, right here in Bloomfield. And so, um, one thing I want to touch on is that every day farms across the country and the state try to diversify to stay alive, right? Uh, they need that economic viability. So they turn to agritourism. They are having weddings, pick your own operations, festivals and other events. And I think people want to know where their food comes from. Uh, they want that connection with nature. And all of us love that sense of locality that comes when we shop at a farmer's market. But I think it's important to remember, farms don't just produce food, they produce communities. And agritourism to me is that catalyst that helps those communities flourish. So, one thing that I think I would like to, to add to, um, not just that one farm example of where you don't have to be a certain amount of acres to, to really show that you're viable and to really support uh, your community. Um, that's, that's why we have that number and why the financial number, that twenty-five hundred um, by the state's uh, regulation, that's why that number's there. Uh, because someone on three quarters of an acre can actually make more money and produce more than someone on five acres. Uh, so I think the acreage number also needs to be uh, taken into consideration that, you know, uh, it, it does not, just because you have five acres and not two, doesn't mean you're going to make more money. Um, that's the first thing. And then if we think about Bloomfield in the future, um, and all those wonderful students that we have here. And we think about new farmers and people wanting farmland and access to that farmland. Um, we cannot put unrealistic expectations on those individuals that they need to achieve a certain economic number, uh, a certain economic threshold or have X amount of acres because we know here in Connecticut, land does not come cheap. And so, uh, the, the last thing I, I do want to say, and this, this goes towards the primary farm use. Agritourism in, in many ways is applicable directly. It lives in the same realm as what we may think of stereotypically as, as what farms do, right? They plant, they harvest. Um, they raise livestock. Well, agritourism is exactly that. When you go to a pick your own blueberry operation, um, you are harvesting the blueberries yourself. You have that interaction and like I said before, that's that experience. People may not necessarily come here to our farm uh, just because they want a different blueberry than they can buy in the store. They come here with the family so that they uh, can have that experience and and share that experience. So, um, I am absolutely uh, in, in support of this and I, I thank you all very much for, for taking the time to listen and, um, have a wonderful, wonderful evening.
Yes. Is there one more?
Um, Mary Everly and then Seth Klein.
Oh.
This, this is a point of clarification, Mr. Chair and Jennifer, are there additional hands raised in our end here too? There's Erica, Linda and Garrett. Do you guys see those three names too?
No.
Yeah, we see it in our end here. There's three additional hands raised to Jennifer.
Yeah, I, I do see them. I was just going in order that I can see them.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm, my name is Mary Everly. I live at two oh five Doncaster Road in Bloomfield. And uh, I am the Vice Chair of the Board of Directors at our farm, uh, currently. Um, I have, I have four comments to make, some in response to the other audience comments that you've gotten. Um, our farm is a five oh one C three uh, based on its agricultural and educational activities. And apart from any zoning up, zoning um, possibilities that this might open up, we are limited in the kinds of activities we can engage in to stay within that five oh C three category. So I cannot conceive that we could stay within that and have concerts three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's not, that's not what we're involved in. Uh, our purpose is to uh, teach youth and children about farming, about agriculture, about nature and the environment and to teach and and to include their families and adults in that. Um, so I, I don't see that we could, we could do what, what some of the people have been concerned about. Um, secondly, uh, we would like to expand into some overnight stage. I, I sent a written statement by email and, and I would ask you to read that, please, because I don't want to go through it all here. Um, what we're looking at is what they're, they're calling Nationwide Farm Stay. Where people want to come to a farm for a weekend or a week, uh, where they can um, so like going to Dude Ranch out west, I guess, where you can participate in the farming activities. You can help, your children can go gather the eggs for their breakfast. Um, they can, they can participate with our, our camps uh, and and our, um, uh, that, that we run for children on the farm. Uh, if you drop the overnight camping, which I can understand your concerns, we wouldn't, we would not allow that because we have concerns for our animals. Uh, but please keep the overnight provision so it's clear that that's within uh, our agricultural uses. Um, and, and when you look at the number of the threshold that you're going to choose for what we can do without getting a permit, what we have to do to get a permit, please balance your need to, to control versus your staff's level to process because it doesn't we need to be able to plan and to end to advertise things like, um, our pancake breakfast in February with our, with our homemade maple syrup or our uh, blueberry festival, uh, during blueberry picking time. Um, our, our fall festival and our party and platter main fundraiser. Um, you know, we need to be able to have a reasonable turnaround when we ask for those permits. Um, so please balance that with your, with your staff's ability to handle all of it. Um, and third and for last, uh, we know we had an issue last year. Um, and, and with, with the High Hill neighborhood and the noise at some of our events, um, we gotta, we are committed to working to address those issues. And we recognize that we are subject to all the noise ordinances, which are pretty low. I mean, fifty-five decibels is what we've been told the town rule is. And that's very, very low when you think about it. Um, but we're committed to complying with whatever we have to and we're looking in different ways um, to be able to, to do that and still accommodate some of these things. Um, so I won't bore you more. I just ask for that, those considerations and to please read my email. Thank you.
Great. Next.
Seth Klein.
All right, are you able to hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Uh, just by way of quick background, as uh, you probably gathered, most of the people speaking in opposition to this are neighbors of our farm, not of Mr. Romano's farm. As I think Mr. Romano would confirm, I've, I've met with him over the last couple of weeks. I found him to be very responsive and I have no reason to doubt his uh, his statement that his neighbors have never complained. And I do recognize the need for agricultural regulations and to be part of a community and uh, I agree with that. I'm not trying to block all regulations, but by way of background, I just want to make clear that our farm has historically been a pretty awful neighbor. And I appreciate what Ms. Everly said about being willing to work with us in the future and recognizing that there were problems in the past. Uh, and I want to be clear, there most certainly were problems in the past with uh, weddings and parties almost every summer weekend, you know, for the past two years before the cease and desist order came in. Uh, and so Ms. Everly's statement that she doesn't see how there would be big parties is simply factually historically untrue. Uh, there would be dance parties where our windows would literally rattle from the base. Uh, and they would consistently refuse to meet with us when we would reach out. Uh, I'm gratified to hear that Ms. Everly now, maybe the board will be more responsive and we can get a dialogue going and I'd like, very much like to do that. But that is the history that's driving this. Uh, and in a similar fashion, uh, Mr. Kopp mentioned that he's not familiar with any noise issues or complaints coming from Bell Bray. Uh, I would just point out that at the ZBA hearing last year for the cease and desist order on our farm, the zoning enforcement officer did point out that Bell Bray's nearest properties are uh, three times as far from the ban shell or the pavilion where these loud music events take place than the High Hill neighborhood. So there's probably a good reason why there are fewer noise complaints over there. Uh, Mr. Kopp's statement that they would uh, nothing in these regulations would change their being subjected to the existing noise ordinance uh, is also untrue. The, the regulations that are proposed do not in fact enforce the current noise ordinance, but change it for a very subjective, unenforceable uh, border of the property level of conversation standard, which is no standard at all, is not legally enforceable, is essentially meaningless. Uh, but notwithstanding this history and all these concerns, I, I certainly support and I think many of my neighbors support, they're Kendall and Kated before, we do support some kind of agritourism. We recognize the need to be good neighbors and to allow this to take place. We do value the open space. But these regulations affect everyone bordering every property. It's a massive undertaking that affects lots It's a massive undertaking that affects lots of people. And accordingly, just as Ms. Kendall indicated before, I would ask that the commission deny this application, not because there should not be any regulations at all, but because there really needs to be a deliberate and full process to come up with regulations after due consideration that are fair to everybody. We should not rush this important process at all. I mean, Commissioner Mara earlier raised important definitional questions that took 30 minutes just to discuss one narrow sliver of it. Commissioner Lester had questions as well. I would submit that this should not be rushed through in a summary fashion, that a full regulatory referral should take place with working groups, with full community involvement. I understand I met with with Attorney Needleman, the town attorney, and Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Mr. Romano last week to discuss some of these issues. And I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, to all of our knowledge, there had never been a text amendment in the history of Bloomfield, or at least that any of us were aware of, a text amendment of such significance that was approved not through a regulatory working group, but simply through commission action on an application for text amendment. My understanding is that typically the text amendments are for much smaller changes and not this kind of sweeping entirely new category of of zoning of of this agritourism. And so I will leave myself there and just say that again, I I think I and I think most of my neighbors are not opposed to agritourism regulations, but we just ask that this be done in a deliberate fashion that makes sure everybody's rights are protected. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, would you please give us your address for the record?
Sure, it's 35 High Hill Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Erica Fern. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight and everyone else that has made comments. I am Erica Fern. I'm Executive Director of the 4H Education Center at our farm. I want to share with you a little bit of my background. You heard from our farm business enterprise manager earlier, Zach. Zach, I met when he was a University of Connecticut senior working on his project when COVID first started. He is new to the farm. We have many new faces here and new management. I started at the 4H Education Center about six months before COVID did. And at that time, we had different people in place. And we were doing what we could to survive during COVID where 40% of the nonprofits like ourselves, outdoor education nonprofits, closed their doors permanently. And we decided we wanted to do what we could to stay open. And maybe some of those choices weren't the best for us in regards to our relationship for our neighbors and may for some very uncomfortable times. Especially that we were the only place where other nonprofits could come and have their programs because they were also trying to survive and we opened our doors. And so in hindsight, that might not have been our best choice at the time. But I do want to share my passion for what I do as a nonprofit manager. I grew up across the river in South Windsor on my grandfather's potato farm in South Windsor. We were a tobacco and potato family. I, when I was 12, I got involved in 4H with my horse and my livestock projects. And I have been a 4H'er true and green ever since. I see what we do here in agriculture is we bring up future leaders of our communities, our states, our countries, and also the world. One out of four jobs right now has a basis in some type of agriculture. A Bloomfield has lost many farms over the years to development. Some might have been preserved as land trusts. And we were very fortunate that the Auerbach heirs decided that this resource, this 120 acres here should be kept open for our community, but also utilized not only to educate children, but specifically to educate them about agriculture. And that is what we do here. And that is why we're so important. Agviability is a concern across the country and across the world. And you have an opportunity, whether you adjust the regulations or you keep them as they are, to support agriculture in your town, to support wholesome food, wholesome living, and to support those students that we see here from pre-K all the way through age 22 with our Our Farm Growing Opportunities Program for students with special needs, where you're learning at the farm four core skills, agriculture, hospitality, food service, and facilities management. Skills that they will be introduced to other employers. So when they come out of high school and can have jobs and work and feel pride in what they do. And that's really important. It's important enough that the Department of Agriculture gave us a grant to continue our work in the Our Farm Go program. So I encourage you as a person who's been engaged with agriculture across the world and also a nonprofit manager to pay attention to agviability in our town and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fern.
Garrett Fallon.
Maybe.
Actually, I see Linda Goodman and then Garrett Fallon.
Why don't we do Linda?
I'm mute. Yes, I'm Linda Goodman. I live at 39 High Hill Road. And I wanted to second all of the comments of Seth Klein in terms of the support from our neighborhood for the agricultural activities of our farm and acknowledgement that there does need to be some level of agritourism. However, we are very opposed to these particular regulations as written because of the impact on our particular neighborhood and the closeness that the venues at our farms have to our homes, which are within 50 yards of where most of the events are taking place. I would second the notion that the Bloomfield TPZ needs to take much more time to wade through some of the complexities presented by these particular regulations and follow a a much more measured process that I I know that Granby followed in promulgating their regulations. I also would strongly urge that these regulations include a section such as Simsbury's regulations on neighboring premises. I think the language in Simsbury is excellent and that it urges that the location of the outdoor events and activities take into consideration the current use of the surrounding properties and that the commission may require specific separating distances and or appropriate buffer strips with plantings, fences, or walls that screen the activity from adjacent properties. On the 120 acres of our farm, it's very unfortunate that most of these non-agricultural activities take place on one extreme end of the farm that happens to abut our homes. Thank you.
Garrett Fallon.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, things have been pretty much covered, but I'm, what I was going to say, I just
Fallon, please identify your address.
I'm Garrett Fallon. I live at 37 High Hill Road. I'm a former public school principal in Washington DC and I just, I'm a National Outdoor Leadership School Mountain Guides certified many years ago. So I appreciate, as everybody said, there's no argument that we love our farm and and what it stands for. And I'm very happy to hear from Ms. Fern tonight that that there were some problems before and she's amenable to try and correct those. And and that's a good sign. I I want to say, being an educator, that I feel there's more opportunity here for creative thinking, problem solving of how to create more farm-related events than to support the farm rather than depending on money-making entertainment things where the where the farm and
Yeah, I did my piece and Garrett's finishing up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Get in the way. So so I would like to do that. The other thing I found, and I'll end on this. When I was looking at some of the comments is the POCD concept. And I just thought, wow, what an opportunity at this moment that if you think about our our farm state park, our farm, the reservoir, Walk Talkit Mountain and Penwood Forest, all connecting in this green way, I think, I don't know if that's the right term. If somehow the city and and our farm could collaborate more and support each other more, then they wouldn't have to depend so much on these entertainment things. And the last comment is if these type of entertainment things are necessary for the farm to survive, I think they should try to find a better site that's not directed right at residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phil.
So I see Kevin Goff's hand is up. I'm not sure if that's for additional comment or if it was just left up.
Additional comment?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge Drive. I just want to comment slightly on our farm because this seems to be part of the nexus of commentary here. Let me say upfront that I fully support our farm. I'm a contributor. I support the concept of what they're doing. And I'm very happy to hear from the director. But I also want to make a clear comment that I related to farm-related activities. I would like to see more farm-related activities at our farm. I would like to see a CSA. I think that our farm has the only mushroom, I think it is the only mushroom barn in Connecticut. And I would like to see them grow mushrooms. I think that there is a lot of things that our farm could do farm-related. And I think there is an impression that our farm is too much of a simulacrum of a farm rather than a farm. That's not to be critical because again, I support our farm and I want our farm to succeed. I think it's wonderful. All of the things that they have been doing, but I think you've heard a lot of citizens comment that the focus should be on farming and agriculture. And again, this comes back to my fundamental comment that I think the cart is before the horse here relative to agritourism, because you can't have agritourism until you have agri. So I will be submitting a proposal for an agricultural zone to the TPZ in the next week or so. And I would hope that we could move this ahead in terms of putting everything together so that we can classify properties in Bloomfield as agricultural properties. And then we can then come up with a lot of the things I think I fully support Mr. Romano's notion that we could have a lot of agricultural-related activities that are value-added and that allow agricultural properties to hopefully succeed as community enterprises. Thank you.
I believe there are a couple of hands going up that are repeats. So I I just want to be sure that I see Garrett Fallon and then Sydney Schulman, if you had additional comments.
Let's get everyone first timers out of the way first.
I, oh, there's Martha. Martha Hess has not spoken yet, as far as I recall.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Can I ask that on the second ones that already spoke, if we can at least limit it to maybe two or three minutes? In the essence of time.
I I think you think you're right. You should
Or possibly less considering the time.
Yes.
And the fact that they've already spoken.
Exactly. Yes.
Thank you.
You had a name?
Yeah, it looks like Martha Hess has lowered lowered her hand.
Okay.
So I'll go back up to the top again. Sydney Schulman.
Schulman, two minutes, please.
Less than that. I do know the area of 501(c)(3) charitable organizations. And I just want to note that with respect to having weddings and things like that on the farms, there is a provision in 501(c)(3) for what they call non-related business income, that it can't be over a certain percentage of the total income of properties. So I question if they match the the provision in IRS regulations, whether in fact, things like weddings are really, really necessary because there'll be less than, much less than what is permitted under IRS regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I only see Kevin Goff. I I believe maybe that's just left from his previous.
Now you don't. Okay, he's gone.
No other, no other hands raised that I can see.
All right.
Looks like there is one call-in listener, so they may not be able to raise their hand. I don't know if they want to speak, but otherwise I don't see any others.
Very good. Let's move on. Comments from the commission. Mr. Mallett. I should start at the other end this time. Let's back up. Okay, Mr. Hussein, you're at the bottom of the list right now. Comments, Mr. Hussein. Kevin, are you with us?
I can go till he's ready.
All right, moving on, Ms. Flint, comment.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Burson. I really appreciate all the thoughtful comments and questions, not only in writing, but of all the folks who are here tonight, including the applicant. There's a lot of good stuff that I'm hearing and it's exciting to think that we could take the opportunity to potentially create agritourism regulations, but I'm not very comfortable considering such long-term proposals in a text amendment format. And I'm wondering if it's something that we should consider as part of updating our POCD. So I think that's the pretty much what I've got to say. And oh, also, I'd like to hear more from other towns that have adopted similar regs, not just from town officials, but potentially other commissioners, if that's possible. And I'd also like to see those regs. I haven't had an opportunity. So I think due process and you know, careful consideration. Thanks.
Mr. Hussein, you're back with us. Any comment?
I apologize, sir, for that. Just trying to get my nine-year-old to bed.
One softball game.
Yes, no, actually, they lost. My daughter lost, but I I would, I support the the need for the agritourism. I do think that I think someone mentioned it earlier. There's a lot of, there's, the devil is in the details. I think we do need to potentially look at the regs. And I believe from the last meeting to now, like Ms. Rodriguez said, that there hasn't been any amendments. If my suggestion would be to, Mr. Romano has now had two meetings and lots of emails and comments to maybe submit amendments for us to review at the next meeting. And at that point, we can make a decision if we wanna move forward, deny, review, or even bring it to working committees and our working groups to go forward. But I, in my opinion, I think we probably should table it for the next meeting, give Mr. the applicant an opportunity to revise or make actual amendments with the planner and potentially then make a decision if we wanna, what direction we wanna go, if potentially also bringing it into working groups, looking at the planet conservation and so forth. And that's what I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Adams.
All right, um, so, hmm. Again, I wanna echo, there are some great points tonight. The Kindles, especially Mrs. Kelly as well, Mr. Klein. Linda Goodman, thank you for your your taking the time out to be here to voice your concerns because we need to hear you. And I think the the common sentiment is that folks are happy and are excited about the agritourism idea, but it's just some of the nuances. One of my suggestions could possibly be where we select a few of the residents immediately circle in these farms and form like a task force or something because you gotta have the neighbors buy in, otherwise it'll be misery. Because, you know, you don't wanna have the the phone calls to the cops or just, you know, not getting along, which is not what we wanna do in Bloomfield any longer. So I would suggest maybe a task force at some point where the neighbors can actually have a sit-down with, you know, the farm owners present so that they can really tweak what will work and what won't work. And I agree with some of the comments where it should be done in a deliberate fashion, not a rushed fashion. I think that was really good advice. Pretty much that's my comment. Thank you.
You, Mr. Lustig.
Yes, I pretty much echo everything that most of our commissioners have said. I'm all for the agritourism, but I do think there's more work if needed before we can actually make a a good decision on this. And I think whatever we do do, it should be in the best interest of both parties, promoting the agritourism and supporting it in addition to addressing the concerns that some of the neighbors have. And I guess I also agree that I think Mr. Romano should reach out more to his neighbors because you may be under the impression that that they're all supportive of you, but but yet you're under a cease and desist order. And that's a little kinda inconsistent with with neighbor support. So I I think it would behoove you to to speak more with your neighbors and try to get a better understanding on how they really feel about what you're doing there. And and I think for now, we should table it and and do some more work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millet. I'm sorry, Mr. Mara.
I think I'm gonna join the bandwagon that seems to be forming. I think the concept of agritourism is a very good concept for the town of Bloomfield. My problem with these proposed regulations is there's so many moving pieces. You have everything to consider from schoolchildren going to our farm to weddings, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, somewhere else in town, to, you know, town distiller, farm distilleries and breweries and wineries. I think the ask here, while there's a lot of good stuff, I think the ask is much too broad. And I think that there's a lot of things that have to be considered and talked about separately. I support the idea. I support the farms and I agree that it's a necessary concept. I had not thought of the concept of taking it up with the plan of conservation and development. That might be a good idea. That will delay this consideration though. But I definitely think that more discussion, working group like Granby had, is probably a better way. But even though I like the idea, I can't support these regs.
You, Mr. Millet.
So I I think the applicant, Mr. Romano, really put something in motion here, a way to save, well, maybe not not only his own farm, but some of the others. So I think I think it's a really good starting place. I'm gonna land with everybody else and just, you know, kinda note a few of the things I do have concerns on so we can take them into consideration as we do hopefully relook at this more in detail and come up with, you know, some of the nuances. I have read, as far as I know, I'm up to date with all the comments that came through. I appreciate the the emails that were submitted. So I'd love to see something with modifications that we can support. I I think, you know, farm venues having open spaces are ideal for some of these, you know, fundraising events and things in a way that don't adversely impact the neighbors on such a frequent basis. I think just some of the things that would need to be looked at is, you know, the enforcement aspect, the permit, you know, that the time periods. So I think it's a brand-new concept of having temporary versus just running with the land. You know, you can do this by right. Thinking about capacity in acreage. So I like the comment about, I believe, Mr. Duda talked about, you know, there could be small farms who who can have, they can make an impact. So we need to think about capacity, event size, things like that. So maybe smaller farms aren't left out, but they don't overwhelm their neighbors. And I'm thinking of timing. So I know there was a lot of comments about time and I think we can get on into that in the working groups. But I would say that, you know, I wouldn't wanna see, I I think we just need to defer to the town has a noise ordering ordinance. And the only thing we would do is mitigate based on, you know, hours of operation or site plans and let the noise ordering ordinance be the noise ordinance and have it be, you know, enforced how it is normally enforced, same as, you know, the the comments. I think it was in the later sections. And the the last comment is, I think the whole overnight thing, that's a whole nother thing. And and the campground, I think there could be a place for it. But again, size, distance to neighbors. So I think I'll leave it there. But I think I'm considering the comments and the amount of engagement and support and against other properties who didn't actually initiate this. I think it's it's really gonna be a benefit when we do come up with something that's good for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Millet. Well, typically at this point, we would give the applicant one last shot, but before we move to that step, there has been a suggestion made and a couple of comments and support of that, that perhaps we continue. I really didn't think we would come to a decision tonight anyway. To my mind, we have two options. We can keep, move to keep the meeting open, the public hearing open and resume next week. I know on my part, I have to digest all that email because I really wasn't looking for it and discovered it all this afternoon. So I do not want to, just for me at least, I don't wanna read it after the meeting is closed, after the public hearing is closed. I would like to keep the public hearing open just so that that information that I digest is done is within the parameters of the public hearing. And anyone else have any comments or suggestions as to how we proceed at this point? Technically, I'm asking to keep the meeting open, keep the public hearing open and pick it up again next week.
Mr. Chair, I think you're absolutely correct.
Well, thank you.
And I think we're within our time limits too, right? I think we're way ahead of our time. So we shouldn't have any issues with the time.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Okay, then I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing at our meeting of twenty-six, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
For the next meeting, meaning May twenty-sixth next week.
Yes.
Okay.
May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Did I say twenty-three?
No, no, no.
No, I think Katie was saying it's only a week. So we, whoever is doing, you know, we have a week to do a lot of stuff, or at least the applicant and maybe Ms. Valentina Rodriguez and then represent it to us, so.
Yes, and at the and at the close of the public hearing next week, I hope Mr. Romano can have his one last shot to look up anything he may either have missed or in response to anything that has come up during the course of the public hearing. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye. Mr. Romano, everyone else, thank you very much. We appreciate your input. Thank you for sticking with us and we'll be here next week, same time, same station.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. And as Mr. Love said, I hope we can get back into town hall at some point. We have one other item on our agenda. We have a planners' report listed. Are you talked out, Ms. Rodriguez, or do you have your report for us?
I think that was just carried over from the last one. I'm certainly happy to forward a revised report for your consideration by email. But certainly, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them right now.
Questions, anyone?
Yes, I have a question. In the event that, let's just say, one of the outcomes is Mr., the applicant removes the, all right, let me back it up. What are, what are the rules for a work if we wanted to have a working group to look into agritourism? What are the next steps? Is that within our privilege to do that, Mr. Chair or Ms.?
I would like to think that we could do that during development of our ten-year plan. But we have never, and you gotta remember, I'm going back to nineteen sixty-nine here. I don't recall that this commission ever set a group apart and said, okay, go study this problem, come back to us. It was always a referral to staff, that staff bring back the facts and data. And as a matter of fact, there was no planning staff at that point. Yours truly was the only one, but that's the way it went at that point. And I don't recall ever doing it during the interim.
Yeah, there are a couple, there are a couple of options. So, you know, certainly if you were not in the middle of a plan of conservation and development process, you could host a public information session and gather input from the public and then have staff propose something to the full commission. Another option is having a subcommittee. You would still have to do minutes, but at least that time could be devoted specifically to this issue at special meetings. And then the special meeting agenda would just be for that subcommittee to meet. And then another option altogether, now that we do have the plan of conservation and development, is you have this twelve-month timeline in which you can choose which workshops you want to hold. And so obviously, the community engagement goals are great right now. And so there really doesn't need to be waiting until you have a consultant hired to help guide the P O C D process. That workshop can really happen at any time.
That would delay things even longer.
It, yes, yeah, that's true.
Well, I think if if you can present some of those options to the next meeting, that'd be good if you.
Exactly, exactly what my comments are gonna be. Let's put it down on our agenda for next week and thrash it out and see where we go from there. I'm not, certainly not opposed to a subcommittee. It's just another laborious step that we're gonna interject into the process. And that's probably my only objection to it, but other than that, let's let's think about it. Let's come back next week all fresh and happy and see if we can get this done, which I don't think is really gonna happen, but we can give it a shot.
Before the long holiday weekend, Barry.
What holiday? Oh, it's Memorial Day, yeah. Who's leaving on Thursday night for a vacation holiday? There you know, but oh, oh.
I'll wait till the next morning. I'll wait till next morning. This is important.
I won't be here next Thursday.
I'll wait till the next morning. This is important.
I will see how it goes. Thank you all very much. Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night all. It's not morning. It's only ten o'clock. I hope Mr. Dude gets his forty wings.